I'll start.
You're on, go ahead.
Thanks, okay. Uh, at seven oh one, I will start tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. Uh, the meeting of Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand twenty, as posted uh, on the town website and in front of Town Hall. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID nineteen uh epidemic pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread on all town and and so all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable as well as on Facebook Live on the Lunenburg Public Access Facebook page. You'll also be able to find the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel recording of this meeting within twenty-four hours of its conclusion. The following information is provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. Uh, from a computer, please use uh Zoom and there is a link in the agenda posted on the town website. For those who have Zoom, if you go to the Zoom application, you can join meeting ID or webinar ID nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. Uh, if you haven't registered for Zoom, you can find it by doing a Google search and then downloading it either on your iPad, iPhone or computer. For those who are not on a computer but are dialing in, you can dial a toll-free number of eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and again entering the same webinar ID of nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. Uh, I will open the meeting. Obviously, there's no pledge since we're doing this remotely. And I will ask if members of the board have any public comment. Uh, I should say the ground rules, uh, as the board members know and other people who are uh, have seen these before will know, but for new people, if you are on a computer and you wish to speak during the public section or any section uh for the rest of our uh guests and employees and board members, find the raise your hand button. You can find that if you go to the participants list, which is located at the bottom called Participants, and you highlight your name, you can see that you can raise your hand. I have full control over who's muting and not muting, so we don't get any Zoom bombings. Uh, let me adjust my screen there. Uh, for those people on the phone, it would be tr- it's gonna be tricky uh because I can't unmute just everybody on the phone, so either try to email me that you have something you want to say with your name uh as listed and I will try to get to you. It's a little trickier with people on the phone. Again, we can't just open up the microphones because of of uh people trying to pirate uh or take control of the meeting. Okay, so with that being said, I will ask if anybody from the board has any public comment before we start. Mr. Jeffries.
Mr. Jeffrey. Good evening. So, you know, I had a conversation with Heather and I expect that tonight during the the town manager's report that there'll be some follow-up to what I'm about to say, but you know, over the weekend I was driving um out of town and I just happened to, you know, pay attention more than I normally do to the sides of the road going down Lancaster Avenue. And uh I was floored by the, and I drive on Lancaster Avenue, you know, nor- under normal circumstances every day when I go to work and when I come back from work, and I was floored by the amount of trash on the sides of the road. Um, and so, you know, when I came home, I grabbed two bags of trash and I just went to the area between my driveway uh or the driveway that I share and the neighbor's house, which is about fifty yards-ish. And I came out with two bags of trash just to kind of pick up the stuff on the side of the road. Needless to say, it was five bags in about a fifty-yard stretch along Mass Avenue. And uh, and I'd say ninety-five percent of it was recyclables. So I know that, you know, the the reason why I'm making this comment today is I want to encourage everyone. I know that we're doing social distancing. A lot of people are home. That this may be a a good opportunity to, you know, come out with your gloves and your mask. And if it's in your immediate vicinity, to pick up some of the stuff that's there. Um, you know, the bending and uh, you know, I think I realized that I'm close to forty when I started bending and uh trying to pick up all this stuff, so I just, I think it may be a family activity. Uh, but I just want to encourage us to 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 keep our town looking clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have any public comment? Any of the public have any public comment? Again, by the raise your hand feature. You can also chat me if you're having trouble with the raise your hand. Chat me in the chat room, which is also at the bottom. If you see on the bottom of your main screen, if you're on a computer called Chat, then you can type to me as well also. Okay, seeing no one. I will uh I don't have any announcements for anybody. Uh, I'm sure a lot of the announcements that I would want to do, the town manager will give during the uh COVID nineteen update after our two appointments this evening. So uh, I will get right to that. So our first appointment at seven oh five is meeting with the police chief to vote to amend the traffic rules and orders for additional stop signs. With that, I will hand it over to both the town manager and the police chief. Let me unmute you both.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for uh inviting me on. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm here to ask you to um approve two stop signs under the provisions of MGL forty twenty-two. Authorize a stop sign at the intersection of the uh Thomas C. Passio's access road where it intersects with Memorial Drive. Um, that, as you know, is sometimes gated off, but when it's not gated off, there's no, there's no warning there. And since the library was built, uh, the building, the library building itself had created a blind spot, so people coming up the access road when they enter onto Memorial Drive sometimes have a a difficult time seeing the traffic on Memorial Drive, so I want to put a stop sign there to help with that uh potential uh hazard. And secondly, at the corner of um the corner of um Jocelyn and Burke Street, that was a stop sign, if you recall. Several months ago, we added numerous stop signs in the Whalem area. It was one that uh I inadvertently left off that list. And uh, again, that's an intersection that uh would require a stop sign to uh prevent any kind of hazard there as well.
Do the stop signs exist already there? Are they ready placed, by the way?
No, they're not there yet. We're just waiting for approval on them. And then uh the DPW director has the inventory and is ready to erect the signs as soon as they're approved or if they're approved.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? And I would entertain a motion regarding the request from the police chief to amend the traffic rules and orders for the two additional stop signs at the locations that he has presented to us. Michael Ray.
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Luck.
I'll second.
Katie, did you have a question or you were gonna second as well?
I was the second second.
Okay, excellent. Uh, I'm gonna leave the selectmen unmuted. It might be easier. Please don't. Just still raise your hand. It's just gonna be easier for me to call on you, but I I won't lose the time in unmuting. Uh, all right, so with if no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the rule, the additional stop signs, please say aye. We'll do it a roll call. Uh, Mrs. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. McQuade.
Aye.
Mrs. Luck.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And I for myself, unanimous. Thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, while before you, before you leave, chief, uh, I'm, is there anything you'd like to bring us up to date on since we have you here regarding any, any announcements from the police department or the public safety building itself?
Um, well, nothing, uh, there's nothing remarkable. Um, I, the one thing I did notice and I'll, I'll uh I I guess I'm, I'm jumping in uh Michael's uh uh domain here, but I know I'm starting to notice a lot of uh masks on the ground and so forth, so I I I like to echo what Mike said and uh I'd appreciate it if uh, you know, the residents would uh at least police the uh those areas. So that, that's, that's been a little bit of a problem. Uh, there's been an uptick in a few, a few incidents. Um, it was not unexpected. Um, but again, um, you know, I, I would just uh ask everybody just to comply with the governor's orders. Um, just try to stay home as much as they possibly can. And uh, you know, be another couple of weeks. Hopefully, we'll get through this. But uh, nothing, we don't have anything remarkable happening right now. Uh,
That's a good thing.
Right, which I'm happy about.
Thank you. Okay, our appointment at seven ten. We have the FY twenty nineteen audit report from Powers and Sullivan. I will hand it over to the town manager to introduce uh the auditors, the people presenting their report from Powers and Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we have Frank Soretti and Ben Adsit here from Powers and Sullivan, and they'll present their findings from the two thousand nineteen.
And I have unmuted both of you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Good evening.
Uh, so Ben is the um, a senior auditor with Powers and Sullivan. He's a CPA and he's been working on the town's a couple of years now. I thought it would be good if he could uh attend the meeting. Um, and Ben works very closely Aaron to facilitate the information that we need for the audit. Uh, sees the team that we have assigned to the engagement and uh really does a lot of the audit work too. Uh, so he's uh glad he could make it. And um, like, also like to say that I appreciate the opportunity to be here to present the results of the two thousand in audit. And I'd just like to start off by thanking the town manager, treasurer, collector, and the rest of the finance team because we had really good cooperation and assistance throughout the course of the audit. And so that's greatly appreciated by all of us, the whole team. From a timing standpoint, we're out for our preliminary audit work in the beginning of June. At that time, we're auditing things like the federal grants, we're auditing the budget. Uh, we test transactions, we're auditing debt. We basically try to do as much as we can in that period of time to get as much of a head start as we can on the uh the year-end audit work and it just uh the more we can do then, then the, you know, the better the year-end work goes for us. It just lightens the load a little bit. Uh, the year-end work was um towards the end of October. And at that time, we're wrapping up any loose ends we might have had from the preliminary work. We're completing all of our year-end audit procedures and we're drafting the audit reports. From a, a result standpoint, we're able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion. It's the best you can get. It means the financial statements uh conform with the generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, all reporting deadlines were met. The information that we received was accurate. We received uh timely responses to our questions and inquiries. And we didn't note any internal control deficiencies, material weaknesses um or anything like that that um you should, would need to be concerned about. Um, some of the areas that are most critical for us as auditors are, are cash and receivables. Those are a couple of areas that we look very closely at on all of our clients and if there are good controls there and good procedures in place, then the audit tends to go smoothly. And if they are not, then things don't go smoothly. But the case of Lunenburg has, for us, the, we've always experienced that there have been very good controls over cash and receivables that they're both reconciled every month. We find the reconciliations to be complete and accurate. There's good controls in place. And so that's always very good to see and it, it really um gives us a lot of comfort as auditors to see that those procedures are in place and that they're working the way they should be. And um, it should give you comfort too to know that there are good, strong controls over those assets. As the, the, the town um is very timely with its external reporting. Um, meaning the reporting uh required by the Department of Revenue, they require a year-end balance sheet. They require a Schedule A, which is a, a financial report that's um submitted to them and they upload the data and compile it at the state level. The town has always closed its books um on a monthly basis. It, it has a very um, a very strict uh schedule of procedures that are performed every month, and that allows the town to to always have accurate financial information. Um, the information that you're getting, um, you can feel comfortable that that's accurate because I know that these procedures are being done monthly. And then the same thing at year-end, it's very timely. And so it allows um the finance director to be able to submit all the um the reporting to the external uh agencies by the deadlines and I'm not aware that there's ever been any issues or delays with any of that. And so that's um a very good sign that you, you have a good uh system in place and you have uh good people in the positions. We test transactions too. We probably tested over about a hundred transactions and as part of that testing, we didn't find any issues with um expenditures, revenues, journal entries. We found that there was proper supporting documentation, proper approvals. Things were charged where they should have been. And so there was really nothing there um that would raise any concerns or anything like that. From a financial highlight standpoint, the town maintained its uh double A plus credit rating with um standard and poor's rating agency, which is very good. That's a very uh high and strong credit rating. Um, your unassigned fund balance was four point four million dollars. That's about eleven percent of the budget. Um, there's an organization, the uh Government Finance Officers Association, along with the uh credit rating agencies. They like to see a minimum of ten percent for the triple A rated communities. And you're right within that range, so you, you have a good, you could have good, healthy reserves. That uh unassigned fund balance has steadily increased since two thousand thirteen, when it was one point six million dollars, or six percent of the budget. So that's a very positive trend for the town um that you're now at a four point four million or eleven percent. Your general stabilization fund similarly um totaled one point nine million dollars. And that again has steadily increased from one million dollars back in two thousand thirteen. So that's another positive trend for your reserves. Um, you've got a zoning stabilization fund with two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars in it. You also have a vehicle equipment stabilization fund with six hundred forty-four thousand dollars. That increased by about four, four hundred thousand dollars during the year because we've um appropriated additional funds into that uh stabilization fund. Your collection, uh, collection rate still continued to be very strong at ninety-eight percent of your commitment. So you're collecting, you know, what you're sending out for, for taxes, which is great. No real issues or that's just a good, strong collection rate. Uh, from a budgetary standpoint, that you ended the year with a twelve thousand dollar surplus. That's in spite of the fact that you had budgeted a decrease of six hundred sixty-three thousand dollars and that decrease is just due to the, the use of free cash. And also um a reserve for debt service that you have related to some MSBA money that was received years ago. Um, the reason that you ended up with a, a slight surplus was that your revenues came in eighty-one thousand dollars over budget. And your, your expenditures came in eight hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars under budget. Those results, you know, are an indication that you have a sound budgetary process and that you also have strong budgetary controls in place. Uh, the only over expenditure that we noted was related to state and county charges and you really have no control over that. Those are charges that come through the state and it's um, it's not um unexpected and it, it happens actually quite frequently. Um, so there's no issues associated with that. On your enterprise funds, your sewer uh fund had fund balance of one point four million at the end of the year. It was about a hundred thousand dollar increase over the prior year. And your sewer betterment fund was eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars and that was about a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase. So those funds are running right around break even, which um is not a bad thing, um depending on what your reserve policies are and whether or not you're trying to accumulate funds for any type of um capital improvements or anything like that, but you've got um pretty healthy uh fund balance levels in there. And your solid waste recycling fund, that fund balance also increased. It was a thousand dollars last year and it went up to ninety-five hundred. So you've got a little bit more of a cushion in that fund, which is good to see. Or OPEB, you put another a hundred, one thousand dollars into your OPEB trust fund. You've now got a balance of about two hundred thirteen thousand dollars in there, which is great. You're starting to accumulate some funds there. Your net OPEB liability was fifty-two point five million dollars. That was a five point seven million dollar increase over the prior year. Uh, that increase is partly due to a reduction in the discount rate. The discount rate that's used uh to discount the liability has a, a very big impact on, on the liability itself. And so as you start putting more money in your trust and building up um a balance and you have like a, a funding plan, if you are able to commit to a certain amount per year, once you get to a certain level, that can qualify you for a higher discount rate, which can significantly reduce your OPEB liability. Um, the fact that your discount rate went down this year, um, which is because it's based on the uh double A municipal bond rate. When you're not funding um or have enough money set aside to, to pay a significant amount of benefits, you have to use the single A uh municipal uh bond rate. Um, and so what happened was that caused the liability to go up by two point eight million dollars, just that change in the discount rate. And then other factors were um your um your normal cost, interest on the liability, normal cost is just the benefits earned by current active employees. Um, and then your, your net pension liability was nineteen point nine million dollars. That increased by two point one million dollars. Um, the, the liability is about forty-three percent funded. You're part of the Worcester Regional Retirement System, so you pay an assessment to Worcester Regional. Um, they're using a seven point seven five percent discount rate. And similar to other retirement systems, they all had um negative investment income for the year ended twelve thirty-one eighteen, which is, that's um the liability that's being reported in your financial statements. Um, and that was me the core rate of return on the retirement system investments for the year. So the year before that was a lot better year and um things aren't looking too great for this year, but hopefully we're gonna have a better second half of the year than we are with the first half. From a debt standpoint, you have two point one million dollars of short-term debt outstanding, and that was for the school construction project. That debt will be paid off when you get your final payment from the Mass School Building Authority. And they're gonna make that payment once they finish their final review of the project costs. And then the addition, any additional um funding that's needed will be funded probably by uh long-term debt. And you didn't issue any new long-term debt during the year. You had forty point eight million of governmental uh bonds outstanding and six point six million of sewer bonds outstanding. Your general fund debt service is nine point four percent of your total appropriations. It's down slightly from the prior year where it was nine point five. And over the past six years, it's been as low as six point eight percent. And it's been as high as ten point six percent. So that that rate is, is coming down a little bit. Usually uh anywhere between five to ten percent is considered to be a, a good, healthy debt ratio. And so those are really the things that I wanted to highlight about the financial statements. If anybody has any questions on that, I can take those or I can move on to the um report on federal awards.
Let's ask if any of the board members have any questions for Miss Sisariti. I am seeing nobody with their hand up, so you did a great job. So on to the next section.
All right. Uh, so the report on federal awards, that's required for entities that expend more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds in a fiscal year. The town expended eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, a hundred seventy-three thousand of that was on school lunch and six hundred thirty-six thousand was on education grants. We were required to I don't know if there's a question. Um, but we were required to test the uh special education grants. And as part of that testing, um, we didn't find any uh, any findings. We had no findings. Uh, we saw no weaknesses in internal controls, no deficiencies, no questioning costs. So this was a, a clean report and best results you could hope for on that audit. So uh, very good results there for that. And that takes us to the management letter. The management letter, I always like to start off by mentioning that this, this report is critical in nature and it doesn't highlight the things that you do well. However, it's important to note there are no significant deficiencies and there are no material weaknesses. The comments that we have in this, this report, we consider it to be um things to help the town to improve uh, to improve efficiencies and to um strengthen controls a little bit, but uh again, nothing here that would uh cause you any concern, nothing here that you should be concerned about. If we had a material weakness or a significant deficiency, then that's something um like a more serious nature that you, you would, you know, you would want to pay more attention to. Uh, so there were nine total comments in the management letter. There were three new ones this year. And there were six prior comments, the three new comments. Um, it was one for old outstanding checks, and it was just recommending that you establish a written policy. Um, with setting milestones for when you contact the payees to follow up on an uncashed check. And um, at what point you take the old outstanding checks off the outstanding checklist and put them into the tailings account. And once they go into the tailings account, which the, that's the next comment is related to the tailings account, you can then uh follow something called the Massachusetts abandoned property laws. And what that is, is you go through a series of advertising steps. And once you've taken those steps, if no one claims the uncashed checks, then they just become miscellaneous revenue to the town. And so we would just like to see um a process put in place where um old outstanding checks come off the outstanding checklist. Um, maybe after ninety days, that's typically uh when they get moved off of the outstanding checklist. Right now, there's about a hundred twenty-five thousand of old outstanding checks. Get put into the tailings account and then from there you go through that abandoned property law and and with a little luck, you take in some miscellaneous revenue. That's not a bad thing for the town. Uh, I mean, obviously you want people to cash the checks if they were due the money, but sometimes those people just aren't around anymore or, or don't respond for whatever reason to the advertising and just take it as miscellaneous revenue at that point, and that's what the law allows you to do. And then the third comment, third new comment was related to supporting patient. Um, that relates to the other post-employment benefits liability. So a census data file goes over to the actuary. And that's what he uses to determine um what your liability is going to be. And so as part of that, we're required to audit uh the census data. And some of the things that we have to look at are marriage licenses for uh spouses and birth certificates for spouses and dependents. And what we found was that some of the files didn't have them, and so we're just recommending that you go through, review the files, make sure that support is in there because that support should be there from an audit standpoint to support that liability. Um, as far as fully resolved comments, there was a comment related to developing an employee reimbursement policy formalizing procedures. That was done in two thousand nineteen. And then there was another one related to documentation of internal controls over the federal grants. Uh, utilizing the uh COSO internal control framework. And the town did draft um internal control documents during two thousand nineteen, so that was great. Uh, that was something that was required by the uniform guidance, which is uh basically what you have to follow for the audit of the federal awards. And so if that wasn't done, then it, that would have become um an internal control deficiency for the federal awards. So it's really good that that got done this year. And then the other uh there's four other older comments. One relates to old uh receivable balances for motor vehicle and personal property taxes. It's my understanding that the uh Board of Assessors has already gone through and reviewed them and is in the process of writing off some of those additional receivables that go back to like two thousand and two thousand and three. A similar comment with the ambulance. Um, in two thousand nineteen, there was some significant process progress made on that. A significant amount was written on. A significant amount was written off. However, there's still 476,000 of the 566,000 of the ambulance balance is over 180 days old. We're just recommending that the town continue to take a look at that balance over 180 days and see if there's any additional receivables that makes sense to be written off to kind of pare that down. That can help with the reconciliation process and just maintaining that receivable. It will just be easier to manage if you're able to remove those uncollectible accounts off of the receivable. There was a comment related to performing a fraud risk assessment. I believe the town is still considering its options, looking to try to see if maybe there's an outside party that can complete that for them. I know that many of our other clients, that's what they do is hire someone to come in. There's one particular firm that does a lot of them and I know they're pretty busy and sometimes people have a hard time getting them. And then the last one was related to documenting key administrative and financial functions. And I believe that that is being worked on now. So hopefully there'll be some progress made on that one. I know that one's not always the highest priority for communities. There's just, it's one of those things that when you have time, you you get to it, but it's not always at the top of the list of priorities. But we do think it's important. The rating agencies actually like to see that type of documentation. And it just protects you in case you someone that's out for, you know, a period of time or someone is out permanently, then someone that comes in to fill in can actually pick up this manual and be able to, it will help to guide them along to complete the job. This makes a transition a lot easier if someone's going to fill in in one of the financial roles in town hall, especially if it's a key person that's out and not, there's not someone else there that might really know that particular job as as well as as they would need to. And so that was with the management letter comments. There was some really good progress made there with developing a couple of those policies and that COSO internal control document, that's a pretty big document. That's a lot of work. I know there's a lot of time and effort that went into that. So that was it, the management letter.
Thank you both for presenting the report. I'll ask the board again if they have any questions for Mr. Sareti or anything about, or we have the town manager and we have the finance director is in. If anybody has any questions or town manager and finance director have any comments they'd like to make, please let me know. Seeing none, I will say, first of all, thank you for the report. Thank you for presenting the report. And to the town manager and the finance director, thank you and for your teams for keeping everything in order to have Powers and Sullivan present such a glowing report, which at every turn seemed to be excellent. So thanks for keeping all the finances of the town in in good order. That is excellent. You know, when we started getting these reports, I remember there were some things that, you know, needed to be done. But as we've gone on, it's been less and less and things have been addressed. And the things that come up in the management letter have been, you know, more and more minor, which is excellent. So so thank you to everybody involved in that, on that team. And thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Sareti, Mr. Adsit.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to be here tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any interviews, appointments, reappointments or resignations?
There are none.
Okay. Then we jump right to current business town manager COVID-19 update.
Thank you. And I will address Sluckman Lux's question under my update related to COVID-19. So the Board of Health is now issuing weekly updates every Tuesday. The update that was received today is dated April 3rd and has been put on the COVID-19 Information Center page on the town website. And as of today, there are nine confirmed positive cases in Lunenburg. I also consolidated all of the relevant information and resources for our local businesses and sent this to the Lunenburg Business Association and is also posted on the COVID-19 Information Center page on the town website. Reminder that all town facilities, schools, town and school playgrounds and school fields are currently closed until May 4th. And communications with town departments, most staff is working remotely, but continues to monitor their phone lines and email. And please contact us if you have any questions. We're here to help if at all possible. If you need to contact a particular department, please visit the town's website at www.lunenburgmass.gov. And each individual department's webpage includes contact information, including the phone number and email address. For a listing of all the public meetings that are being conducted via Zoom, you can visit the calendar on the town website at lunenburgmass.gov. For senior center updates, as with other town facilities, the Eagle House is closed to the public until May 4th, as well as all their activities and that are onsite and offsite usually. The Eagle House staff is working remotely, but is still, will be performing outreach, delivery of meals on wheels and other vital services to our seniors. The Council on Aging Director has a variety of programs and updates that she has been sharing through the Eagle House Facebook page. Van transportation service has been canceled until further notice. And the Eagle House staff is delivering the meals on wheels to households and these deliveries are made on Mondays and Wednesdays only with multiple meals for those days. Clients are asked to put a cooler outside their door to place meals in, so there's no contact when the delivery is made. There's also another meal delivery service called Heart to Homes for seniors aged 60 years and older. And their contact information is hearttohomehomesmeals.com or you can call 508-658-3000. Due to an increase in the request for the Salvation Army food boxes for seniors, the Salvation Army will be delivering 25 more food boxes. The Council on Aging Director also worked with the Lions Club to add additional food items to the boxes and to add toilet paper. Thank you to both the Salvation Army and the Lions Club. For any questions related to senior services, please contact Council on Aging Director Sue Doherty at 978-582-4166 or at sdoherty@lunenburgonline.com. The Salvation Army also has their food pantry operating at their 739 Water Street address in Pittsburgh by appointment only. To make an appointment, call 978-342-3300. And pickups are scheduled Monday through Friday, 9 to 11 a.m. The police and fire departments are accepting donations of personal protective equipment that can be delivered to the public safety building lobby. This includes gloves, disposable gowns, masks and goggles. The cell is still on their normal operating schedule for trash and recycling. An information update on town meeting and town elections. The special state election will be held Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. The annual town meeting will be held Saturday, June 13th, beginning at 9 a.m. And the annual town election will be held starting at 7 a.m. on Saturday, June 20th at the TC Passios. Due to a court order that was filed on Thursday, April 2nd to extend the deadline for the submission of nomination papers, and that was granted by a judge on Friday, April 3rd, the deadline for the submission of nomination papers to the Board of Registars is now 5 p.m. on May 1st. An update on the municipal relief bill sign that was signed into law on Friday. After weeks of deliberation and multiple versions through the legislature, an Act to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities resulting from COVID-19 was signed into law by the governor on Friday, April 3rd. The Act is now known as Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. And please note that an earlier version that allowed a waiver of town meeting quorum requirements is, was not included in the final law. There's that the bill itself and the what was signed into law is very comprehensive. It includes plethora of information related to delaying of town meetings beyond June 30th. The ability to recess and continue town meetings multiple times by the town moderator. The adoption of a temporary fiscal 21 budget in the event we could not hold a town meeting before June 30th, that it would allow for a 1/12 budget each month until a budget was adopted. It also calls for the use of free cash after June 30th. If a budget is not adopted. And other budget related items as well as options, a local option to delay property taxes and other municipal taxes and waive the interest and penalties. And also includes sale of alcohol by takeout restaurants. So this is for like restaurants that currently have a on premise liquor license. They will be allowed to do a takeout for sealed alcohol containers. And it also includes a, the delay of the for permits that require public meetings and hearings, such as ones that are under the planning board that require, say, a 65 day action to be taken. There's a toll on that time process. So the ones I would say that until we know whether our town meeting will ultimately occur on June 13th. And if it has to be delayed out of our control beyond June 30th, we wouldn't have to proceed with the ones requiring a delay beyond June 30th. You know, a break under a 1/12 budget. But we will be looking to the board to take action next week regarding the local option to delay payment of grill state and personal property and and sewer bills till June 1st, to delay that till June 1st and waive any interest and penalties on those.
Amy, you have a question?
Sure, yes, only if Heather's done. I just had some questions with the liquor license. I know I had heard that already. Where we're the liquor licensing authority, I'd like to better understand what this takeout liquor means and how you would comply if you're a restaurant.
So it would mean only one, the restaurants right now, and I don't have a complete list. I would need to talk to Elaine, who's still operating right now, that has a on premise license. It would mean that they would be allowed to serve in the takeout order, containers of, say, beer and wine that are not opened containers. So if they sold a certain type of canned beer, they could sell that as part of their takeout.
Okay. All right, so they can't, so you can't like have some sort of container that you make a drink in and then it leaves. It has to be like a previously sealed
Yes.
item. Okay, because I was imagining like, you know, somebody getting like a mudslide and taking it home. And like, how does that work? So it's basically just a beer, wine or wine cooler that's closed.
Yes, yeah, sealed. Yeah, so that, yeah, that would be very hard to police with.
No mixed drinks.
I do have some further updates unless there's more questions on the the law that was signed into.
Phyllis has a question.
So what you were saying is discussing the late payment and the forgiveness of fees are the only two items on this that we're going to discuss next week. Everything else we're just waiting on.
There's no action required for anything else. There's nothing before us right now that would require us to take other action for the other provisions.
Yeah, you know, it does make it possible to delay town meeting.
It does. Like I said, if if we were forced to, if we could not hold town meeting on June 13th, this does provide the option, but at this time.
Well, we could do, we could decide to, to err on the side of caution. Could just delay. This gives us permission to delay town meeting further, should we feel that that is more cautious.
So I'd have to read into it more. So the first one, it allows to be delayed beyond June 30th if the governor has declared a state of emergency related to the public health. So I don't know if the governor lifts the state of emergency. That would still apply, but that's a question I can ask Adam Costa.
Thank you.
The way it's written, I mean, we should get the clarification. The way it's written, it leads us to believe that it wouldn't need further legislative action if the governor's orders were extended to go beyond that. But if they're not, if they're lifted before, then you wouldn't have the right to push it further. That's what I interpreted as, but we'll get the final interpretation from from Attorney Costa.
So tax payments was the next item on updates. Tax payments should not be left in the box outside of town hall because the staff is working limited hours in the building and working remotely. And they should only be mailed to the town's lockbox or can be paid online. And the online bell payment link is located in the public service announcements and on the website. And the lockbox address is Town of Lunenburg, Department 1260, CO Box 986500, Boston, Mass 02298-6500. And any questions, please direct them to the treasure collector, Mylene Mallory at 978-582-4130, extension 135, or at mmallory@lunenburgonline.com. I'm just going to go over a few new updates. A lot of this information is continued, but there are some new items. Unitil customer service has, Unitil has created a customer assistance and recovery effort fund. And this was announced by work, that they worked with the local community action program, otherwise known as CAP agencies, to create a fund in an effort to aid Unitil customers who have been economically impacted by COVID-19. They have committed 150,000 to this fund plus an additional 75,000 to COVID-19 related programs at United Way and other local agencies. Customers with financial challenges should reach out to their local CAP agency or Unitil's representative at 1-888-301-7700. Updates from the state, as of yesterday, there were 13,837 COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts and 260 deaths. 76,429 patients have been tested to date at the various laboratories. And our weekly briefing we had today with the Lieutenant Governor, we should expect to see a surge in Massachusetts between April 10th and April 20th. The governor's order on March 31st extending the closure of all non essential businesses, stay at the stay at home advisory and prohibition of gatherings of more than 10 people. Just she, the Lieutenant Governor expanded on that, that the list of frequently asked questions that is on their website, the COVID-19 address addresses issues that needed clarity. There were, when they initially put out the order, there are a variety of questions that they've addressed through the frequently asked questions. And they also provided further guidance on construction activities, which you can find on that website as well. And then a list of updated list of essential businesses. And that's mass.gov backslash COVID-19. Another update that the Lieutenant Governor on our briefing today said was coming out today was that there wasn't going to be an order limiting grocery stores to 40% of their maximum occupancy level. limiting grocery stores to 40% of their maximum occupancy level, including customers and employees. So the, um, each store ha, will have, uh, a different number and they'll be, um, asked. This is through the Department of Public Health that this is going to be issued. And the state is asking the local boards of health to address any complaints and that they should try to resolve these with the local stores instead of punitive measures. That was all that was new for updates this week. And this will be on the town website, sent out through the townwide email, sent to the Lunenburg Ledger and, um, put on the town Facebook page and sent to public access.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody, uh, on the board on the town manager's COVID-19 update? Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I don't have a question as much as a comment, just, just to add on to what you, uh, provided first. Thank you, Heather. The very comprehensive update, um, on, uh, COVID-19, the different resources that are available to residents as well as kind of what's going on, uh, what's new and information's always changing. Um, I just wanted to provide some, um, a couple of people reached out to me just asking about unemployment. I'm not, I'm not sure why me, but, uh, you know, I've relayed back to them that the information that's available on the state website is that the federal government has not, uh, issued their guidance yet on the new law, the CARES Act that has passed. So currently all those extra provisions, all those extra provisions for, um, contractors, for people who are in the gig economy, working for, you know, Lyft or Uber, that they still cannot file unemployment claims yet, that they're still waiting for that guidance to come from, uh, the federal government. But the state did pass additional, um, information. So just, this is really just for the people out there at home. Uh, if you're in this situation, if you've applied a line, you're being denied, uh, just stay tuned. Uh, if you go to the Mass DUA, Department of Unemployment Assistance website, um, just keep checking in and then we'll post an update when that becomes available. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's get to number three, cause I see that, uh, Becky Lantry is with us. So let's go to the, uh, proposed ballot question of the annual town election regarding the adoption of the Community Preservation Act. Uh, is there any introduction that we need, Madam Town Manager first, before we go to Mrs. Lantry?
Nope. Just that there is information in your Google Drive with the documents related to the ballot question as well as information, um, Ms. Lantry provided her presentation and related to the CPA.
Okay. Without further ado, Becky, it's all yours.
Hey, hopefully I'm doing this right. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. This is all new and different for me. I'm sure it's all new and different for you, but you've got a little bit more experience at it. So, um, needless to say, I'm Rebecca Lantry and from the Lunenburg Historical Commission. And I did send all of these documents to you so that, um, you can read them at your leisure and absorb this information a little bit more thoroughly. So, um, our commission has placed the Community Preservation Act on the town warrant. But we're placing this, uh, the Community Preservation Act on the warrant because Lunenburg needs money to solve the problems of our aging governmental infrastructure. We need to preserve and create recreational space for our town in order to enjoy, enjoy the great outdoors. Additionally, we hope to serve our community's needs for affordable housing for low-income earners, including both young families and elderly, so they can continue to live here in Lunenburg. We need to provide money to adapt housing for handicap accessibility, whether it is a wheelchair ramp or grab bars in the bathroom or shower. We believe the Community Preservation Act is the vehicle of government to get this done. Since 2000, the CPA is the shortened answer for the Community Preservation Act. Just, I'm going to use that from now on, has been providing funding for 176 other communities in Massachusetts because they passed this act. Lunenburg last attempted this CPA on our ballot was back in 2008.
Hold on. I, I think that your voice, your audio is not right somehow. We've lost your audio. Can you try again?
Are you not hearing me at all?
Now, now it's getting louder again.
Oh, maybe I need to.
It just cut out.
Cut out?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. And I will speak up and try to speak to the microphone. Okay. Um, this presentation hopes that Lunenburg will once again pursue, um, community preservation funding. So to continue on, Lunenburg was established in 1728. This means our town nearly goes back to where, before we were starting as a nation. We're quite old. We have old buildings for our municipal government. Our town center and beyond into our community is all historic and it all adds to the character and the beauty of our town. Currently, there's a committee already formed to study the logistics and the costs of moving our town government to the TC Passios Elementary School. This would abandon the town hall, the Ritter Building in the center of town. It's important to ask whether this makes sense for our town. Ultimately, this will be a matter for the people of Lunenburg to decide. We live in modern times with high-speed internet and want buildings to be accessible with parking for all. Those are the facts. However, my concern is for the historic buildings that will be left behind. With no plans and no money, will they become another victim of demolition by neglect like the old primary building? In that case, our town government shut the door, turned off the heat, but not the water, and deferred both maintenance and security indefinitely. We can all agree that the primaries building has become a wasted resource to our town. Consequently, this is why we put, we need to have the Community Preservation Act. We need to be proactive. We need to be the change that puts the money into the savings account for the future, doubling our returns with matches from the state. We should pair with other state and preservation grants to get the most money for this community. Change is coming, but if we don't reimagine what to do with our historic buildings and how we can plan to re-adapt them for community needs going forward, they will all become an eyesore. I'm tired of bringing my hands. I'm showing you the money and I'm showing you a way forward. I'm hoping you guys will get on board. So let's get to the specifics. To that, to do that, I'm going to spell it all out with a who, what, when, where, and how. Who? If this bylaw passes, we will need to set up a community preservation committee. This community preservation committee will require between five and nine members. The length of their terms will be determined. And the method of selecting this committee members will either be by designation, by the select board, election, or appointment of both. Um, our local government will help in each of these organizational just, um, decisions. According to the CPA, our CPA members must include one, um, according to the CPA, uh, Act, um, this commission must include one member from each of the following. A local member of, from the Conservation Commission, the Board of Parks Commission, the Historical Commission, the Planning Board, and the Housing Authority. If our government does not have or established any one of these boards or commission, our representatives serving in a similar capacity can be appointed to this committee. Now, what is the CPA charged to do? The CPA will come up with projects that will go back to the town meeting for the people of Lunenburg to decide which project to apply our CPA funds to. If the people of Lunenburg vote yes, the money gets spent. If the people of Lunenburg vote no, the money goes back into the pot, gains interest and waits for another viable recommendation from the CPA commission that the majority of the people of Lunenburg deem worthy to spend their money on. The control of the money lies with the people of Lunenburg at the town meeting. Okay. It's not going to be a private little group that's going to decide this. It's the people of Lunenburg at the town meeting. Now, what kind of projects will the CPA fund? First, not less than 10% of the money is to be a set aside for open space. An open space is defined as, but not limited to, land to protect, um, to protect existing and future, um, wealth fields, aquifers and recharge areas, watershed land, agricultural land, grasslands, fields, forest lands, fresh and saltwater marshes, other wetlands, ocean, rivers, streams, lake, pond frontages, beaches, dunes and other coastal lands, lands to protect scenic vistas, lands for wildlife and nature preserves and lands for recreation. Second, not less than 10% of the CPA funds must be used for historic space. Uh, used for, a historic space is defined as a building, structure, vessel, real property, document or fact that is listed on the state registry of historic places or has been determined by the local Historic Preservation Commission to be significant in history, archaeology, architecture, or culture of the town of Lunenburg. And finally, not less than 10% of the CPA funds shall be used for the 10, for community housing. Community housing is defined as low or moderate in, income housing for individuals and families, including low or moderate income senior housing. Support of the community housing shall include, but not be limited to, programs that provide grants, loans, rental assistance, security deposits, interest, rate write downs and other, and other forms of assistance directly to individuals and families who are eligible for community housing or who own an entity that own, or to an entity that owns, operates, or manages such housing for the purpose of making the housing affordable. Any remaining funds may be used for recreational use or rehabilitation projects. Recreation use is defined as active or passive recreational use, but is not limited to land for community gardens, trails, non-commercial youth and adult sports, and the use of land as a park, playground, or athletic field. However, recreational use shall not include horse racing or dog racing or use of land for a stadium or gymnasium or other similar structure, structure, sorry. A rehabilitation project is designed as rehabilitation, capital improvements, or making extraordinary repairs to historic resources, open space, land for recreational use and community housing for the purpose of making such historic resources, open space, land for recreational use and community housing facilities for their intended uses, including but not limited to improvements to comply with the American Disabilities Act or any other federal, state, local, or access code provided with respect to historic resources. Furthermore, rehabilitation projects shall comply with the standard of rehabilitation stated in the United States Secretary of Interior's Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties. Additionally, with respect to land for recreational use, rehabilitation shall include the replacement of playground equipments and other capital improvements to the land or the facilities thereon, which makes the land or related facilities more functional for their intended recreational use. Now, how does the CPA funding work? Well, half the money will come from the residents of Lunenburg through the imposition of a surcharge of not more than 3% of tax levy against real property. This does not raise the taxes of the town. Rather, this will assess a surcharge of the property, um, surcharge on property tax bills after they've been calculated using the community current rate. All contributions calculated according to the distribution formula. Um, you can see that there's a link to this below in this, um, thing. Depending on our contributions and the other half of the funds has the potential to be matched up to 100% by the state. Now, there's been a bit of worry on people's mind as to whether, um, there is still 100% match. There was when this act first went into place and it has, as each, as we now have 176 communities getting into the pot, would we get 100% match? The research that I have done has said that the town of Lunenburg, because of its size, if it went for a 3% levy, would get 100% match. Those communities that are larger, such as Cambridge and Boston, do not. It comes through with round of fundings and they get a proportional, um, match, but they do not get the, the 100%. Um, and they don't allow them to gobble up the entire fund so that there's nothing left for small communities. Um, so there is a, a, um, uh, there is a buffer for us in this. So an example of how, what, what are we, what are we talking about for numbers here? If you had a home assessed at 380,000, okay? The first thing that would happen is that it's in our act that we would subtract the first $100,000 off of all residential property values. And this is what I put in the, um, warrant as an article. This is an exemption that we would take. So everybody gets 100, uh, 100,000, cut right off the top of whatever the fund, whatever the amount of your house value is. So this would change this, um, value of this property down to 280,000. Then applying the tax rate, which I have as 18.12, um, this would make this amount, um, 5,074 dollars um, as the amount of what you would pay for taxes on this property per year. And finally, we would assert, we would, um, take a 3% surcharge on this. And this would mean that the amount from your $380,000 property that would go into this fund would be $152.22. Now, this money would then be transferred into the Community Preservation Fund and this would be matched 100% by the state. Now, there is a consideration here. The 3% does get us 100% match. But these are different times and these are crazy times. So we can have this surcharge range anywhere from 0.5% to the 3%. We would only get the 100% match at the 3% rate. But we can decide to play with this number. And that would come up at town meeting as to whether we go for the full match or we go for a portion of it just because this is crazy. Um, and stuff. The other consideration is that there are towns such as Air right nearby us that on their warrant, they're going from 1.5% up to 3% um, on this warrant. Granted, all this is stuff that people have done just before all this, um, COVID-19 stuff has happened. The other thing that is a consideration to put in mind is the fact of the matter that this fund can be used for rental assistance. And this is an important consideration for a lot of people now. Is that, you know, I can't pay my mortgage. I can't pay my taxes. I can't pay anything right now. This money could be used for that. You can set up a vehicle, a mechanism that would be able to, you know, be a replacement funding situation, anything of that nature. So this does have implications for what is happening in these times. The resource that I use for this was the communitypreservation.org/funding. They have a wonderful website that is up, gives you all far more details. Um, that's all I've got, but if you have questions about this, I'd love to answer any questions from what I know.
Thank you, Mrs. Lantry. I would open it up to the floor if anybody on the board has any questions about what was presented. Mrs. Luck? Mrs. Luck? Are you muting yourself?
Can you hear me?
Okay, there you go.
All right. I'm reading the, um, from the understanding, the distribution formula, it talks about round one and that 80% of the total revenue um, at the end of October each year will be paid out in round one. And each of the communities will receive the same percentage match to funds raised with their CPA surcharges. And it doesn't say how much that is. It does, it does, the caveat is if you don't, um, contribute 3%, then you can't get to the second and third rounds, but I don't really understand round one.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. I have control over the mute, by the way, so if you're muted, you can unmute. You can mute yourself, you can unmute yourself.
All right. Sorry, I, I, this is my first experience at this, and it's crazy. Um, I got my instructions from my, uh, my, uh, technical support, my daughter. So, this is it. Um, my understanding is that round one, they give out 80% of the funds. If we are a 3% community, then there are various other rounds that come out. There are round two and round three. They, what I read was that then, so you get 80% of your funds the first go around, and then the next comes out as, as, as you are a 3% community, or you're not. So, I don't know if this answer the questions are not, um, and stuff. I just looked up everything that's, anybody that's in the $10,000, $10,000 community size gets, um, and it's 3% gets the 100% match. Does that make more sense, or does it not make more sense?
It doesn't make any more sense, because I don't understand round one.
Round one.
Go ahead.
Round one. They, so the state has, where, the, you want to know, well, the state gets its money from a surcharge on all real estate transactions. My understanding in the past was it's somewhere around $40, when you make a real estate transaction, gets put into this fund. That's how the funding came. So, the state then has to give this money back, but it doesn't have to give it back to everybody who didn't elect for more than, didn't elect the 3%. And they also have a funding formula that proportionally gives out the funds so that, yes, everybody gets 80% the first go around, but not like, okay, there's only so much money in the pot, and, uh, Boston's a big city, and Cambridge is a big city, so they're going to take all the money, and the rest of you can, you know, not have anything. Uh, because that's all the money we have in the fund. So, they wanted to make sure that everybody got some money the first distribution, and then the re, the remaining money went out to those 3% communities that are of a smaller size. And there has been legislation that has come when there's been the oversurplus in the budget, that they've actually put more money into this fund, um, especially as real estate or, um, transactions have gone on, that have put more money in the fund. So, they, they have distributed more throughout the year, not all of it all at once. That's all the best I know.
Just seem that it, that the first 80%, it doesn't depend, it's not dependent on whether your percentage is a half a percent or 3%, that, that comes into play in rounds two and three. It sounds like, it looks like everybody is treated equally in round one.
Right. So, if we only wanted to put aside 1.5% from our town, then we would get that 1.5% um, match from the state, but that would be it.
You're, you're, the way you've described it, Phyllis, is correct. So, the, of the money that's going to be distributed, 80% of it goes evenly to an even percentage to everybody who's participating. And then the rest of the 20% is other rounds that only go to people in the, uh, 3% range in rounds two and three.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. McQuade.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, Becky, for bringing this forward. I know we talked about this way back when I was on the Historic Commission nine years ago, so glad to see it before the town again. Um, I'll be interested to see what the reaction is at town meeting. It is, you say it's not a tax, but it is a raise of the taxes, so we'll be see what, we'll see what peo, people are willing to contribute, but.
This, this is the one thing, it is not going to raise the taxes. It doesn't.
It raises how much you owe the town every year, does it not?
Yes, but the truth of the matter is, you gotta think about this as like a 401K. You know that you need to put a roof on your house.
I know, you don't need to sell me, Becky, I understand that, it's just you're asking people for more money every year, and a lot of people don't have it. I, I have it, I give it to you. You have my vote, it's just, you have other people.
What I want, well, I don't know how many other people can livestream this or not, or, or hearing this. Um, is just that I want them to understand that this money goes into a savings account for the town to be able to use, to spend on things that we've already spent, um, money on in the past. We have improved, you know, the leisure field on, for, um, the recreational facility there. We've gone ahead and had to paint the town hall, and we've all done this with 100% of money that had to come out of the town. I'm sitting there saying, we can get this at half price, you know, and we can do this going forward. So, it's like putting aside a savings account for us to do this, and we're only going to spend that money if the town agrees. That's a project we want to get it behind, you know, so I'm, you know, yes, we have to set aside money, but we're setting aside, and we're spending that money anyway. And we're asking, we're, we're getting 100% of it has to come out of the town. And I'm saying here, we can get it half that, half the money for the half-price sale, you know, let's go for it. You know, there's money on the table, and we haven't, we haven't taken advantage of it. We keep saying, oh, no, no, it's more money, but we're still going back and spending all that, you know, and that's where I wanted to, that's where I'm hoping we can get smarter, you know?
Mr. Jeffries.
Yes, thank you for the, uh, presentation. So, I have a couple of, um, questions broadly. I think I broadly support the concept. I'm not sold yet. Uh, I think that there's just a few questions, uh, that I think I and maybe some others have. So, the first is, um, you know, the, the obvious is that next week, we're deciding on postponing, um, tax payments for another month, and then in June, we're gonna, you know, vote on whether or not there should be a 3% on top of everyone's tax bill. Um, I think that for some people who are going through a difficult time right now, that there, no matter what, got to be a no, um, on that one. Um, and I think that the, the concern is, as you, you know, in this presentation, there's, there's one area where I see an opportunity to get some of those no's to a possible yes, which is on that 10% that is referred to for community housing. So, I have a question about that, I have two questions. So, in the write-up that you sent to us, it says that our community housing shall include, but not limited to, programs that provide grants, loans, rental assistance, security deposit, interest, rate write-down, and other forms of assistance directly to individuals and families who are eligible for community housing, or to an entity that owns, operates, or manages such housing for the purpose of making housing affordable. So, my first question is, for those people who are not eligible to live in community housing, but are seniors, um, what kind of relief could they get from this act?
Okay, so it is income-based, so if you live in your own home, but your income says you would qualify for seeing, you would qualify for low-income or senior housing, but you own your own home, you live in your own home, it's based upon your income, you would qualify for this assistance, okay? And the same thing goes if you own your own home, like, full paid-up mortgage on a low-income, you know, and you would still qualify because of your income for low-income housing, you could get assistance from this. Um.
A question on that, then, if, if, if it's a person, and I don't want to get too weedy here, but if it's a person who's retired, and they have a 401K, for example, and that 401K, you know, they're, they're five years into retirement, they hope to be retired from their 15 years, uh, or 20, and, but they're sitting on a pretty comfortable nest egg. Uh, what is that threshold, and I don't know the answer, what is the threshold for what would qualify a person? In other words, I think that residents at home, they want to know, how much money can I not make to potentially get some relief from this?
It's basically the same formula that we have for our low-income housing already, the one that's down at the old Tired Town Drive-In. So, whatever the town has for their formula, there's nothing different for this. It, it goes by what the town already has in place. It's not, um, we don't make up anything new in this CPA.
Okay, and the second question, I, I think it may be helpful to, to know as part of the, um, sale to the town of the, because, you know, the first, the, the main parts of which are, of what this does, I think it's a no-brainer. Um, I think it's the, it's the last part of this, that I, as I recall, has been the, the holdup, um, as well as the 3%. So, I think it would be beneficial if people knew what that threshold was. I don't personally know it, I'm sure we can look that up pretty quickly. The other question I have for you is, what past spending has a town done in, let's say, the last five years that would have qualified for CPA had we have had this enacted?
Okay, so we painted the town hall, that would have qualified, okay? Um, I think we had to rebuild, um, the handicap access to the town hall. That would have qualified. Um, the fact of the matter that we went ahead and, um, we bought the lane property, that would have qualified. Um, the, the Waylum, uh, I think it's, I, not exactly sure. I think the place is called Leisure, um, Field, it's right on, in the Waylum District. It, that was rehabbed, we spent money out of town meeting to go ahead and rehab and rebuild that. That would have qualified. Um.
I think what would be helpful is.
Even if, even with the, the, um, low-income housing that we built down in town, um, tri-town area, that would have qualified. So, all of those things are things that I can think up off the top of my head that would have qualified.
I, I would encourage that if, if this program, you know, what you're roughly saying is that it's going to be about 100 and, roughly, you know, $150 a household, roughly. Um, is that if we had some numbers or data on what has already been spent in the last several years, and is that number more than $150 per household? And, um, and if it is, and, and, and not just on the senior housing, or not, excuse me, not senior housing, not just on the community housing portion of it, but, you know, the, all the stuff that would have otherwise qualified. If we had that number that said, look, we've already spent $300 per person on this, and had we have had this, it would have cost less. I think that that's probably the, the sale point.
That's a good point, and I'll try and gather together those, um, those kind of, um, items to put together on a list.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
All right.
The Saliva property was another one, by the way, that would have qualified. Um, so I, I was behind this, I, I was involved with the two committees that tried to push this twice in Lunenburg's past using the same, um, the same sale points, and the fact that it made all the sense in the world, and that was when it was, it was assured that we were going to get 100%. So, I am completely behind this again. Uh, it's been frustrating over the years that we didn't adopt it when it was much better payouts. Uh, but for whatever reason, the town has decided not to do it. I'm fully into trying it again. And, uh, I thank you for bringing it forward to the town again with you and your committee, and everybody working with you to do it. Madam Town Manager, do we need a, a vote on this tonight?
We do not need a vote tonight, but we will, uh, sometime in April in order to meet the deadline for the ballot question.
Okay, so we will not take a vote if there are documentation and to answer some of the questions or comments that some of the board members had, uh, that would be good, Becky, to try to get to, to us, and try to get something that we can put on the town website, so people can download these documents. Maybe the ones that you sent us, if they're not already there, can be put on, maybe under the Historical Commission, or some other location, uh, just so people can read for themselves.
That would be helpful, yes.
Mrs. Luck.
Um, when we discussed this, um, at an earlier meeting, one of the questions I had was how many communities are, um, in at the 3%, and how many are in at half a percent? What is the distribution of communities, and how much that they put in? And I had asked that at the last meeting, and I would, would like that information before we vote.
Okay, um, that is on the community preservation, um, website. It unfortunately comes up as a, um, so you can look directly there. They have a map, and they also have, then, behind it, all of the, um, communities, because it's 176 communities. The map is color-coded, and so when you send it in a black or white document, it, it's like shades of gray, and it, it's very difficult to discern. But it does have behind that map all of the communities that have the percentages where they are, are at. Um, and stuff, so I, I can resend that. I, I think I sent that in the original, um, bundle of documents, but I can resend that to people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions on this? I want to thank you for your presentation, and, uh, we will be, we'll let you know. Keep an eye on the town, on the Board of Selectment agendas, but we'll try to let you know when we are going to vote on it, in case you want to join at that point.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the review of annual town meeting warrant articles. Madam Town Manager, I will let you take it away.
So, the, um, like I had mentioned last meeting, there were some that I would recommend that we remove, where the board removes, and, um, they would be the four first right or a few first right of refusal articles for the purchase of those parcels, as well as, um, the article for the land at, uh, 635 Mass Ave.
So, five articles total?
Yes. So, they're, uh, titled, they're at the very end of the draft warrant from DD, letter DD on to HH. But I don't know if you want to go out of order to do the, um, vote on the first right of refusals before deciding on that.
I'm getting to the bottom of the document.
And while you're doing it, what's the reason for, uh, DD removal?
635 Mass Ave, um, at this time, I don't think it's fiscally prudent to recommend that we purchase the property.
So, let's, let's talk about that one by itself, so does anybody have any discussion or motion on removing DD that has to do with the purchase of 635 Mass Avenue, taking it off the warrant? Uh, Mrs. Luck. Hold on, hold on, I gotta unmute you. Go ahead, no. Do not, do not touch your mute button. All right. It is not unmuting you. Hit it just once, Phyllis. Hit your un, there we go. Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yep.
All right, I won't touch it again. I agree with the town manager, I think it's prudent to remove, um, she's saying DD like dog, dog, right? That's the one she's talking about?
Yep.
Um, and so I'd, I'd make a motion that we remove that article from the warrant.
Well, I had a second.
Yes.
Mr. McQuade has seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. McQuade?
Aye.
Mrs. Luck?
Aye.
Uh, hold on. Katie, hit on, hit your, there you go. Kate, Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Mr., Mr. Jeffries?
No.
And an aye from me, so 4-1, it's removed.
Yeah, is, the information that we have now is the suggestion that this may not be an option again in the future?
No, I don't think it's, um, eliminating the option. It's just at this time, I wouldn't find it prudent to recommend borrowing for. I wouldn't find it prudent to recommend borrowing for this article and that's what we would need to do to acquire it.
So then we have the three or four, sorry, E E F F, G G and H H, which are all the right of first refusals. Uh, because we have not heard, I mean, it is delayed, so our decision to do this, the, the clock has basically stopped. So we don't have to put them on here. We will have some time and we can wait for the boards to uh, this vote. If we go ahead with it, it was just to take them off the warrant. We can discuss them and when the planning board and the open space committee and the conservation committees, when they start meeting and they, they get a chance to discuss these properties. But I think it would not be prudent to put them on now because we're not going to get answers from any of these committees probably in time. And again, with the budget situation, probably uh, not likely to raise the money. But it's, that's what's up for discussion. Mrs. Adams?
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that these were put on the warrant so that if we wanted to act on them, but by removing them from the warrant tonight, it doesn't mean that we're waiving the right of first refusal.
That is correct.
Okay.
Madam Town Manager, that is correct, right?
Well, you would need to, if you uh, exercise that right to purchase them, you would need to act on that by appropriating money to do the purchase within a certain number of days.
Right, but the clock is paused now on that anyway because of the governor's order.
Correct.
Okay, so, so it's, but we're not, this vote tonight is just to take them off the warrant. It is not to waive our right of first refusal. I just want to be clear that that, for me, that's what this vote is. We are just wa, we're not putting them on the warrant. If something comes up later and we decide, we can, I mean, obviously would require another town meeting and it seems unlikely, but we're not doing that right now anyway. This is just a deci- decision to take them off the warrant. Which were put on as placeholders. Mr. Jeffries?
Yes, so uh, coming up on our old business, I believe we're voting on the right of first refusals for these properties. And I, I did read in the notes, recommendations from both the conservation uh, commission and the planning board.
Okay, well, what's coming up later in the meeting is not this vote. That's all I'm saying. This vote we're taking potentially, we don't have to take any vote if no one makes a motion, but the vote we're taking right now is not on the right of first refusal. It's just to take them off the warrant if we wanted to. When we get to, when we, when we get to old business, we can decide if we want to waive the whole right totally then. Mrs. Luck?
Um, I, I just wanted to agree with Mr. Jeffries that we have received word from planning and conservation that they are not interested in these properties. And I would like to make a motion that we remove the three of them from the warrant.
Four of them. E uh, E F G and H. Double E to double H.
Alright, double E, double F, double G and double H.
Second.
Mrs. Adams?
I was just gonna second also, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. McQuade?
Aye.
Mrs. Luck?
Aye.
Mrs. Adams?
Aye.
Mrs., Mister Jeffries?
Aye.
An I from me. So they are off. Are there any other items on the draft town warrant? Or uh, town meeting warrant that we want to consider, Madam Town Manager?
Uh, not for removal.
Anybody else before we move o, move on from this agenda item? Mrs. Luck?
Um, I would like to talk about changing some of them, not removing them, but changing them. Reducing the capital plan. For example, reduce, reducing OPEV, reduce, using the station fund. The Capital Reserve Stabilization Fund. I think we really need to look at everything.
Yeah, we are going to look at everything, but the town manager hasn't resubmitted and reworked the budget yet. So I think it would be premature. We'd have nothing to base on even on.
What I'd like to do is look at the capital plan. There was something that could go right away, in my opinion.
And Mr. Chair, the uh, capital planning article is a generic article. It, you know, during the budget process from now until town meeting, that can be changed.
I'm assuming we, we want to consult with the capital planning committee? Okay, so, so I think all those items, Mrs. Luck, will be addressed as we go through the budget. If we're not looking to take them off and they, you're just looking to modify them.
Do you have a schedule for the budget at this point?
Do we have a schedule for the budget?
Yes, the schedule was sent out and so it's every, the finance committee is meeting every Thursday. And the hearing will be on May seventh.
Has the, I, I don't recall seeing a revised timeline. That, I mean, obviously we had a timeline at the beginning before this all broke out, but uh, sorry for the poor choice of words, but uh, before all this happened, we had a timeline. Has that exact timeline been revised with new dates? And if not, can we get that so we know what we're working from? Knowing that it's fluid and it could change again?
Yes. Great, thank you.
Actually, it was sent and it was in the March twenty-fourth.
Okay, let's look at it. Budget calendar revised. And there it is. So it was, thank you for finding that very quickly.
You're welcome.
So, under the, our March twenty-fourth meeting, there's a budget calendar revised and in yellow are all the revised dates.
Right, and now we have the, the election date is the only date that was missing.
Right. Okay. Let's go on to current business for approval of minutes of November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, December tenth, two thousand nineteen, December nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, January seventh, twenty twenty, January fourteen, twenty twenty, and January twenty-first, twenty twenty. I would entertain a motion on those meeting minutes being approved. Mr. McQuade?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as listed?
Do we have a second? Mrs. Luck?
I'll second that.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. McQuade?
Aye.
Mrs. Luck?
Aye.
Mrs. Adams? Whoop, hold on, Mrs. Adams.
Aye.
Mister Jeffries?
Aye.
An I for myself. They are approved. I'll make an announcement of the warrants that I signed uh, under the authority given to me on one of the earlier Board of Selectments under the Governor's Emergency Plan. They were for payroll in the amount of eight hundred ten thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And accounts payable in the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand, eighty-three dollars and three cents. Another accounts payable in the amount of sixty thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And a payroll deduction in the amount of forty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Action items. Anybody have any action items?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Adams?
I think at conservation, um, they had a topic last week of the hunters who were requesting to hunt on conservation land. And I didn't watch the meeting and I don't know what became of, of, of that agenda item. But I know it's come to us a couple of times and we've said no. So I just didn't know if we could, I don't know if Heather can reach out to Matt Morrow. I just want to continue to follow it from our perspective of what they're asking conservation for. Um, where we've already said no. Um, I mean, I, I can go back and watch the meeting, but just sort of formally, I want to follow from our perspective, why they're still seeking um, the dialogue on, on that topic.
I can follow up.
Thank you.
Any other action file? Okay, committee reports. Anybody?
Nope.
Okay. So then we come to old business. Number one, this is the, this is now, Mister Jeffries, the vote on the right of first refusals for the four chapter sixty-one properties. I guess there was a recommendation by the Conservation Commission that of these four, none of them are of inherent value to the town to attempt to pursue a purchase. That is their board, their commission opinion. Have we heard from anybody else on this, Madam Town Manager?
No.
Is anybody inclined to want to wait to hear from anybody?
Um, I know there was some questions on B in terms of the fact that the amount of acreage they were describing was different than what was on the deed. In terms of it, it actually, there, there was something there um, that there had been questions on that weren't completely answered, but the other ones I think were pretty straightforward. See, it says the eight acres on Holman and Northfield, but the deed that they're actually releasing from chapter was like a hundred and fifty acres or something. And the, the lots weren't like there weren't engineered drawings of exactly what the eight acres were. So in terms of releasing such a large parcel, parcel from chapter, they didn't describe the piece of it that's coming out or something like that. And it's a little bit vague, but I know there was something there with that one. In regards to the actual, it's, it, it's lane-related property. It's in that area. It's um, on the other side. From where the lane house is, but it's all part of that um, area. So I don't know if we'd want to follow up a little bit more on learning about the specifics of that one, but the other ones, I remember presentations on them, them being very straightforward and they don't have any relationship with Lunenburg land and things like that.
Okay, they don't, I mean, the Conservation Commission in their opinion didn't, don't, don't, don't address any vagueness. I mean, they, they are calling something track A. I don't know. I mean, is the location of it important if nobody thinks it's, any of it is worthy of us purchasing it?
Yeah, I don't know. It had come up, I think, at a planning board meeting, but it was just before, I don't think any, I don't think they've met again. But it just had to do with the, it, it, it's, the deeded land that's involved is like a hundred something acres and it says eight acres and it wasn't, there were no engineered drawings that said like the parcels and things like that. But I don't know if it even has any relevance to anything at this point in terms of, I don't see us purchasing it. So I mean, that would be the point of all of this anyway. So regardless of the details, I don't see that we would be buying land.
Okay.
So I guess it doesn't matter.
Yes, I think that what, what our vote here, if we voted to pass on the right of first refusal and, and would just mean that we don't have any interest in purchasing it. So I don't want to make anybody go through hoops if doesn't matter where they put the eight acres, if, and if all of it is not going to be deemed that we're going to purchase it anyway. I, I'll open up, Mister Jeffries?
Yes, in our um, in our Google Drive, there's a, it's a document titled Memo R R, R E, R O F R. Properties, and this is where the planning board provided recommendations for the properties, uh, they re, excuse me, the recommendations were to, were for us to waive the right of, right of first refusal. Except for the property that um, Miss Adams just referenced, they did have some questions. It's on the second page. Um, and the gist of it, I'll read it. It says, "The planning board is concerned about the following items in relation to the packet provided by the applicant. Number one, there appears to be a significant number of contingencies, including the purchase and sale." Um, and then number two, the packet submitted does not include a stamp, a planned stamp buyer, uh, registered uh, professional land surveyor. And three, there was no uh, property, excuse me, it says there was no property meets and bounds description included in the submitted packet. Um, Adam Burney also forwarded a legal opinion. It's titled Legal Opinion on um, three hundred Holman Street, which is referencing the, the one property that the planning board had a question about. And I believe that he satisfactorily answered that question. However, you know, Mister Passios I see as a process question for us about open space review. So I'm prepared to make a motion, but I do have a question about, I, I, I don't know the answer to Mister Passios's question.
Well, we, yes, that would normally be the way to do it, but if two boards of the three have already decided that they don't have any interest, I mean, we could wait. That's up to this board. The real question is is that something we want to do?
Well, with that, then I will move to exercise our uh, right to refuse purchasing uh, the properties presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. McQuade? Now, this is before we vote, the vote, the move is to waive the right of first refusal. Is that what the motion was, correct?
Correct.
So an I vote is in, Miss, Madam Town Manager?
I have a clarification. I think the motion should actually, that you're not exercising your first right of refusal.
Alright, thank you. Then I will I'll, I'll modify that to say that we are not exercising our right of first refusal for the uh, four properties as presented.
Will you re-second, Mister McQuade?
Yes.
Okay, so an I vote is for not acting on our right of first refusal. So Mister McQuade?
Aye.
Are we gonna do discussion?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I didn't see your hand up, I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, I would just like to say if um, we could amend it to remove B. If I recall, and it, thank you, Michael, for reading some of that. It's some question about whether or not it should be even coming out of chapter, and I don't know for a bit of a halt for that. You know, I don't know who else would halt it, but the, when he, it's that part about um, whether or not it's really even meeting the criteria. And so I didn't know since um, they had highlighted that and then we haven't had an opportunity. That's the one that would really impact open space too because of where it is and the amount of acreage that could potentially be connected if we'd maybe let, put that one in the back burner while we gather more information and release the other three. So remove Holman Street and Northfield, just for now, maybe even for a week or so.
Mister Jeffries, are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Mister McQuade? Are you willing to second it without that property on there?
Yes, but I mean, we're, we're, the motion is to not act.
Right, I think.
If we wanted to.
Was our motion to waive the right of first refusal?
No, it was change, not act, not exercise.
I think I'm confused then on what we're, the motion was.
We're not exercising a right of first refusal, so they can do what they want to do with their properties.
So I wouldn't want to include that one as, I guess my, would be my recommended amendment.
Right, so she wants to hold that, that that is still under consideration. That is. Right. So she wants to hold that, that that is still under consideration. That is what her request is. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so will you amend it to so that your, this vote will only be for three of the properties excluding. B, which is the plus or minus eight acres on Holman Street and Northfield Road?
Yes.
And Mr. McQuade, will you?
Yes.
Okay, so. So we will take that vote and we will leave. The eight acres on Holman Street for a later date. All those in favor of the motion of the three properties, Mr. McQuade.
Aye.
Mrs. Luck.
Aye.
Mrs. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
And an I from me. So. What exactly are we looking for in clarity? Just so we know when we're going to determine what we do with Holman Street?
Oh, I guess I'm just leaving it open while we learn more if it maybe got to go through open space. Um. To get more input from the planning board because they left that one sort of open in terms of their recommendation. So I just simply felt like we. By keeping it. Um, by not waiving it, we let other people still discuss it, I guess, so we can make sure we understand it. It's really that acreage difference in the things that Michael read, and thank you, Michael, for having that information.
Yeah, I believe that what I'm reading in the second page that Mr. Jeffries pointed out, that the planning board is questioning whether it's a valid bona fide offer.
Yeah, and I didn't know if we're the only halt for that, I guess, is is by not, I I'm not sure. I guess I just wasn't, I'm not sure.
I'm just saying, I think we have a legal opinion from, from Attorney Costa that this was, did constitute a valid. Offer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffries.
I think we have a summary presented by Adam Bernie, which is okay with me, um, but I think it, I agree with. Selectman Adams on this, that we may want to get more clarification directly from Attorney Costa.
Okay. We can wait for that. Okay. So that will remain on the old business, that particular one. Uh, discussion on the town manager performance evaluation process and timeline. So Madam Town Manager, did you present us with a timeline?
I did at the last meeting and there was discussion about. Uh, delaying the process due to the current situation beyond what's in my contract. I did think about it and I although appreciate the offer. Um, I would like to try to meet that deadline and if I am not able to, if it's coming up on that date and I feel like. Cannot meet that deadline, I will inform the board to request to delay it.
Okay, so we will go with the that, the timeline from last week then.
Yeah.
I love short agenda items, especially at the end of a meeting. Uh, any discussion on the fiscal year two thousand twenty one budget, which we don't have, or the, all these, all these should say revised now because. They, they don't exist in their current, their previous form. But I don't know if anybody has any questions about these, the FY twenty one capital plan. And the five year financial forecast. Obviously, the forecast is not going to change, but I think the first two items most definitely will change. Going forward.
Can I cover a couple of these in my town manager report?
Sure. Well, that's a great segue. Town manager report.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll start with the announcement of vacancies. There are two alternate vacancies on the agricultural commission, one vacancy on the Americans with Disabilities Act commission. One vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission. One vacancy in the Finance Committee, one vacancy on the Open Space Committee. And one vacancy on the Planning Board and two associate vacancies on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And any interested persons can get a talent form from. The town website and it can be submitted either through mail or electronically. Uh, to the selectman's office. All right. Update on the Saliba property grant requirements, the deadlines for the land and park grants. That the town received towards the purchase of the Saliba property. On Northfield Road will not be extended beyond the deadline. And um, that's June, this June. I contacted the agency in charge and um, they said they are not extending the debt. They feel we should be able to, our community should be able to meet that deadline. So we are on track for a May closing date on the property or in, are in the process of doing the following. I coordinated the hiring of an environmental consultant to perform an environmental assessment on the property. And this will be completed by the end of April. The conservation administrator will coordinate the purchase of a sign designating the name and how it was cooperatively purchased with the Commonwealth. The conservation administrator will create a management plan that will need to be submitted to the state. And the open space chairman, Brandon Kibbe, will send an updated open space and recreation plan to the state as this is a requirement of the grant as well. An update on employee dental insurance. Through our insurance broker cooking company, we solicited proposals from our current dental insurance company, Altus. And also through Maya for Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental Blue. And our original pro proposal through Altus came in at seven percent over fiscal twenty rates. And after both companies submitted competing proposals and after two conference calls with members from the public employee. Committee, we all agreed that switching to Maya's Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental Blue Plan would benefit employees the most. The proposal from Maya, it was a five percent increase over the fiscal twenty rates and locks in the rate for two years. Provides added features to the plan and a larger provider network. This information will be sent out to employees at the end of the month in time for their open enrollment period during May. And will go into effect on July first. And this is um. Completely an employee funded optional insurance, not town funded. Update on Green Communities. Prior to the closing of town facilities, the Green Communities Task Force had been meeting to discuss various projects to submit for this year's competitive grant. Which included an LED lighting project at the middle school, replacement of appliances with energy efficient appliances at Turkey Hill. Replacement of appliances at various town buildings with energy efficient appliances. And funds towards the purchase of hybrid police cruisers. I'm working on trying to get estimates related to a retro commissioning report that was done during the last Green Communities grant. That had a number of recommendations to be done at the public safety building that would result in energy savings. We have until May first to submit an application. And this is uh, related to Selectman Jeffries uh, public comment. Uh, the neighborhood cleanup of roadside trash. So the DPW uh, as in. La, they did this last year. They're providing regular trash bags to volunteers that wish participate in helping clean up their neighborhoods by picking up roadside trash. So once the bags are full, volunteers can contact the DPW to pick up. At an identified location. So please contact the DPW to request bags. And their number is nine, seven, eight, five, eight, two, four, one, six, zero. We would appreciate any volunteers that would help in that effort. Fiscal twenty updates, the finance director and treasurer collector put together a projection of revenues for the remainder of the fiscal year. And based on their projections using fiscal nineteen revenue figures. Which would be conservative for the remainder of the third quarter and the entire fourth quarter of fiscal twenty. There would be a positive cash flow for the remainder of this fiscal year. Fiscal twenty one financial updates, there was a virtual economic round table scheduled this morning. With the chairs of the House and Senate Committees on Ways and Means, the Secretary of. All right, the Secretary of the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. And other guests. Hold on one second. I got my message that my battery is running low. Um. And so this was to discuss the impact of the current public health crisis on the Massachusetts economy. But due to technical issues with the broadcasting system, it is being postponed until next week. Ensure that the system is fixed and they are able to live broadcast this meeting. Based on today's weekly briefing with the Lieutenant Governor. The Senior Deputy Commissioner, Division of Local Services, Sean Cronin, and officials from MEMA and the Department of Public Health. The state has not formalized any revenue projections and they're continuing to monitor. Plan and advise as they develop their analysis. As I related the finance committee at their meeting on Thursday, my approach to revamping the fiscal twenty one budget will be to reassess our revenue projections. And the fiscal twenty one expenditures as follows. I've asked RRG, our assessing services firm, to work with the Land Use Director and Building Department. To review the projected new growth figure, even though this has been reduced twice during the development of the fiscal twenty one budget. We'll use a level funded amount for the, from fiscal twenty for state aid. To use a level funded amount for fiscal twenty for local receipts and examine if these need to be pulled back further. Postpone the hiring of additional staff and additional hours for certain positions and the related health insurance costs. And review the capital plan and possibly reduce the amount for the capital plan. In order to reallocate the tax revenues, tax revenue portion towards the operating budget. At the finance committee meeting on March twelfth, I had indicated we could reduce the allowance for abatements and exemptions amount in the fiscal twenty one budget. And this would create an additional fifty five thousand available for the operating budget. And this still stands uh, the case with. Uh, that figure. That's, we feel that's sufficient to cover. The allowance for payments and exemptions. Overall, the approach would be a conservative approach on our revenue estimate so that we can possibly readjust it the fall special town meeting after seeing how the first quarter. Revenues of fiscal twenty one come in. In other department updates, the Assistant Town Manager and I are assisting the assessors department in putting together an RFP. For tax assessment services as well as drafting a position description for a principal assessor. The plan is to go out to bid for principal assessing services at the same time as advertising for a principal assessor. And based on the response to both the RFP and in the principal assessor position, determine the best course of action for that department. Due to the notice from Solid Waste Service Sewer Services that they are terminating their contract with the town. The DPW director secured a new firm that will provide the service until June thirtieth. In the interim, a RFP is being developed by the DPW director and sewer business manager. That will go out to bid and secure a firm for the start of the new fiscal year on July first. In other meetings and announcements, Town Council is holding his office hours via Zoom tomorrow. With everyone that signed up through a doodle poll and office hours in May will be May twentieth, twelve to four P M. The disposal of yard waste at the old landfill off of Young's Road. Will commence Saturdays from nine A M. Until four P M. Starting on April eleventh until May sixteenth. I will participate in the Board of Assessors meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, April eighth at one P M. Via Zoom. School Committee is meeting tomorrow evening, April eighth at seven P M. Via Zoom. And I will participate in the finance committee meeting on Thursday, April ninth at seven P M. Via Zoom. And as well as the sewer commission meeting on Tuesday, April fourteenth at three P M. That's all I have heard.
Questions for the town manager in her report? Thank you, Madam Town Manager.
Welcome.
There is none. So we have um, the next two weeks, next two uh. Tuesdays, April fourteenth, April twenty first, we are scheduled to have meetings as we would normally. So be prepared for that. We will be posting those as usual with all the Zoom information and dial in information. Do we have any public comment from the public? Mr. Passios.
Yes, is my microphone working?
You are, you are now live, yes.
Okay, Dave Passios, fifty six Whiting Street. It's quite disappointed that you took the votes on those properties this evening without uh, any input from the open space committee. Um, your board in a joint meeting a number of months ago, maybe even over a year ago. Uh, made a commitment to the open space committee to. Make sure that they were allowed to review properties that came up such as this or excess. Uh, properties that were being sold off. We've missed out on opportunities in the past. Uh, they use a totally different uh, criteria for looking at properties. Uh, than the planning board and conservation and uh. One of these days, we're going to have another missed opportunity because they have not reviewed properties that we have a chance to uh, acquire. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any public comment from the board? No. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Or have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Mr. McQuade? Oh, sorry. I didn't realize you muted yourself there. There we go. Mr. McQuade.
Aye.
Mrs. Luck.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
Aye.
Mrs. Adams.
Aye.
And I for myself, I want to thank everybody, uh. Town manager, the police chief, the representatives of Powers and Sullivan. Uh, the historical commission and Becky Lantry for uh, attending and presenting at our meeting tonight. Everybody stay well, take care of yourselves out there and take care of each other. We will see you next Tuesday. Good night.
Have a good night.